Hello Cohasset, this is a meeting on December 12th, Tuesday, December 12th, 6:01 PM of the Cohasset Select Board. This meeting is being recorded as we speak. We will not be checking Facebook for any comments. The Chair will entertain comments at her discretion. And we will check Zoom again at our discretion. We're going to try to stay on time tonight, so I'm going to try to keep to the schedule. All right, first thing, call to order.
Jack Creighton here.
Ellen Marr present.
Paul Grady here.
Jeanne Hailey Dipple here. All right, all are invited to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okey dokey. All right, the first item is an executive session item under exemptions three and six. These are to respectively discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation of the public body and the Chair so declares. The Chair so declares as the Board will discuss the pending Oyster Farm litigation. Exemption number six is to discuss the purchase exchange lease or value of real estate if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Here the Chair so declares and the Board will discuss a potential lease. I would invite a motion to go into executive session under exemptions three and six.
I will make that motion to go into executive session under exemptions three and six.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's do real quick poll vote. For the record, Mr. Plucks is here. Mr. Plucks?
Aye.
Mr. Grady?
Aye.
Ms. Marr?
Aye.
Jeanne Hailey Dipple, aye. Okay, unanimous size, we're going into executive session.
December 12, 7:07. We're about four minutes over. See what I said earlier? We are going to try to keep on schedule tonight, which means I'm probably going to attempt to abbreviate. Some comments from folks. So to that end, is there anyone online who or in the audience who wants to make a public comment? You have one minute for any comments?
What?
Nope.
About what?
About whatever you want. You always have a public comment. Okay. All right. Now we are. Yes.
I'm sorry. We need to be talking about the town hall tonight, or is that the?
That's later. That's later on the agenda. Yes, you will be able to listen at that point. All right. Mary Clow.
For the continuance of the classification. So I did a little bit of research. They've changed the way we do the LA five, which is the form that, you know, this whole hearing is for to determine the uniform tax rate. So we need three votes. We need a vote for the uniform tax rate or a split tax rate. We need a second vote for that commercial exemption that I explained where they can shift within the within the class. And then there's a third, which is the residential exemption. That's a shift that normally is for people that have towns that have a lot of summer residents like the Cape. They would do a residential shift and the people from out of town would get the burden and the people that lived there year round would get the relief. So my board recommended the uniform tax rate and they recommended a no vote on the residential exemption and the commercial exemption.
No vote on the residential exemption?
Exemption, correct.
Have we ever done one?
No.
Is there anything else you'd like to present before the board vote?
Oh, and the other piece of it was that we didn't have the levy limit, the excess levy. And we've determined that to be $10,118.94. So that's the gap between the maximum levy and the utilized levy.
Any questions the board has? Would anyone like to make a motion as to the, I think we need three separate ones.
Yes.
And the first one is as to the, I'm just looking. The Internet's not working here for me.
The uniform tax rate.
Would anyone like to make a motion as to the uniform tax rate?
Some move. So we're to adopt a uniform tax rate between residential and commercial.
Correct.
Which is what we've historically done.
Yes, correct.
Moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 The second is a no vote or a vote to affirm that we are not separating out the residential exemption.
Correct.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 And the third is as to the
Small commercial exemption.
Small commercial exemption. And specifically, is there any specific language you need to that?
Same as the residential exemption.
Okay. All right. Would anyone like to make a motion as to that effect? So this is as to the commercial exemption that we're not going to be exempting based on size. There's going to be a uniform commercial rate among the commercial buildings.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 All righty. That's it.
Thank you very much. My last one.
If I could just take a sec. So I really want to, this is Mary's last meeting, but I want to thank you for all the years of service. And I also want to introduce our new old assessor, Rachel Carlisle, who's joined us. She was our assistant assessor. We brought her back. So they're now kind of swapping and sharing, penning Mary's January.
January-ish.
I just want to say thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trying to line her up to be our habitat coordinator for the habitat project.
Have to close the hearing. One last week.
Okay. Motion to, I'd invite a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we're on to board and committee appointments. Eric Anderson. Anderson here. Anyone in the audience, Justin?
No.
Okay. All right. This is to appoint Mr. Anderson as an election worker. Any discussion about Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I was curious about the fact that he's a Hingham resident and he wants to be a Cohasset election worker. Is that normal?
Or I guess permissible?
So Lisa Lepatahler gave me this application and asked me, you have the point, you do not have to be a resident to be an election worker. This is a gentleman that works in the DPW, I guess, who's from Hingham, but he's interested in elections.
Okay. We clearly have a spot.
Yes. She needs more, too.
Do we know if the applicant has sought similar positions in Hingham in the town where he lives?
No, he does not. As an election worker?
Yeah.
He's not, he's not voting.
Be nice if we could ask the applicant that directly.
Yeah, we can invite, I mean, this time for the next election if we really want to know. I guess, does it really matter? I mean, he likes Cohasset. He works for us in DPW. He's interested in working more in the town he already works in. I don't have a huge issue with.
Do we have other election workers who aren't residents?
Yes, there's one. I think Carol, who works at Recreation, who was a class of his.
Okay.
And we're searching for workers, too. Not like he's precluded by the people.
No issue for my perspective.
Would anyone like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Anderson?
I'll make a motion to appoint Eric Anderson of 41 Colonial Road in Hingham as a town election worker.
Your second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Now we're at license permits and hearings. So we were going to have one for mine at wine tonight, but I understand that that has been withdrawn. Is that right, Tracy?
He's got to reapply once he gets everything.
Okay. Okay. Yep. Yep.
Close that hearing?
Yeah, Tracy, we have to close the hearing now at this point? Is that right, Chris?
Yeah, close the hearing and then.
Okay. I do a motion to, invite a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the mine at malt. Wine and malt license application hearing.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Right.
Accept the withdrawal of the application.
Make a motion to accept the withdrawal?
I'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the wine and malt license application for mine at wine, like for mine at wine company.
All right. All those in favor, please vote aye. Oh, is there a second? Sorry.
Second.
Mr. Pluck seconded. I'm sorry, Jack. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Okay. Now we are moving on to the license and permits. The annual license renewals. This is going to be a long recitation, right, of each one? My internet is not working. Ellen, do you have the list? Would you mind making the motion because this is not working anymore? Is there something wrong with the building with the internet?
You want?
Are you on? Okay.
It was just, so. Section by section?
So the way it works is that we have to move for the top line and then list all those there under, right, Chris?
Okay.
And so we just laboriously go through.
Okay. So do you want me to do it?
That would be great. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal of the following all alcohol on premise licenses. Celtic Bistro Corporation, Corporation DBA Bia Bistro, The Corner Stop Eatery, DBA The Corner Stop, Atlantica Operating LLC DBA Old Salt House, VNAA Incorporated DBA Ava Caccina, White Crane Incorporated DBA Feng Shui Restaurant, New Yen's Kitchen One LLC DBA New Yen's Kitchen, RB LB Inc. DBA Lenny's Hideaway, and Nine Depot Inc. DBA The Blue Oar. So we need a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Chris and Paul?
Aye.
Okay. You man, Ms. Tracy.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal of the following Walt Line and Malt On Premises licenses. South Shore Playhouse Associates DBA South Shore Music Circus, Five South Main Street Inc. DBA Five South Main, Salty Days Cohasset LLC DBA Salty Days Fish.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 All right. I'm going to recuse myself for the red line and then I'll step back in.
Okay. Like to make a motion to approve the renewal of the following in holder all alcohol on premises license. The Red Lion Inn Operating LLC DBA The Red Lion Inn. So I made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal of the following club all alcohol on premises licenses. George H. Mealy Post Number 118, The American Legion, Cohasset Golf Club DBA Cohasset Golf Club.
Your second? All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Like to make a motion to approve the renewal of the following retail package all alcohol licenses. Liquid Beverage Inc., Wine and Spirits Depot, Yogi Raj Corporation DBA Curtis Liquors, Sagen Enterprises LLC DBA Wine and Spirits.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
To make a motion to approve the renewal of the following retail package, Wine and Malt licenses. Mulaney's Fish Market, Barrel and Vine LLC DBA Barrel and Vine, The Barrel at Cohasset LLC DBA The Barrel.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the renewal of the following common victualler licenses. Celtic Bistro Corporation DBA Bistro, The Corner Stop Eatery DBA The Corner Stop, VNAA Incorporated DBA Ava Caccina, White Crane Incorporated DBA Feng Shui Restaurant, New Yen's Kitchen One LLC DBA New Yen's Kitchen, RB LB Inc. DBA Lenny's Hideaway, Nine Depot Inc. DBA The Blue Oar, Salty Days Cohasset, Cohasset Pizza Company Inc. DBA Victoria's, Three A Pizza and Grill DBA Three A Pizza and Grill, Five South Main Street, South Shore Playhouse Associates DBA South Shore Music Circus, George H. Mealy Post 118, The American Legion, Cohasset Golf Club, Cohasset Pizza House, Atlantic Bagel, Chief Donuts LLC, King Donuts LLC, French Memories, Three A's Dairy Hut, Olympus Grill, Starbucks, Peel Pizza, Maiden MA, Atlantica Operating LLC DBA Old Salt House, The Barrel at Cohasset LLC DBA The Barrel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the renewal of the following in holder common victualler license. The Red Lion Inn Operating LLC DBA The Red Lion Inn.
Second.
I have to recuse myself. So if you guys want to vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move to approve the renewal of the following local entertainment license, licenses. The Red Lion Inn Operating LLC DBA The Red Lion Inn, RB LB Inc. DBA Lenny's Hideaway, Nine Depot Inc. DBA The Blue Oar, South Shore Playhouse Associates DBA South Shore Music Circus, George H. Mealy Post, The American Legion, Corner Stop Eatery DBA The Corner Stop, Celtic Bistro Corporation DBA Bia Bistro, Cohasset Golf Club, White Crane Inc. DBA Feng Shui.
Second.
I'm going to recuse myself as to Red Lion Inn. Otherwise, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the renewal of the following state entertainment licenses. Red Lion Inn Operating LLC DBA The Red Lion Inn, The Corner Stop Eatery DBA The Corner Stop, RB LB Inc. DBA Lenny's Hideaway, South Shore Playhouse Associates, Associates DBA South Shore Music Circus, George H. Mealy Post Number 118, The American Legion, Celtic Bistro Corporation DBA Bia Bistro, Cohasset Golf Club, Nine Depot, The Blue Oar.
Second.
All right. I'm going to move again. I'm going to recuse myself again from the Red Lion Inn. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the renewal of the following Class One and Class Two Car Sales New and Used Vehicles licenses. WN Motors Inc. DBA Coastal Nissan 742 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Cohasset Imports 508 Chief Justice Cushing Highway.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Last one. Move to approve the renewal of the following Class Two Car Sales Used Vehicles licenses. CBK Auto Jeffrey Pankas 47 Beechwood Street, Aristocrat Auto and Truck Sales Joseph Rosano 105 Ripley Road, John's Car Care John Kubek Owner, Elhaj Auto Group LLC.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
John's Auto Care is not in business, I think.
I thought that.
It's true.
John's Auto Care, didn't we just approve a license transferal to?
Yeah, they're out of business. Do you have, is that on your list?
Yeah.
Oh, please scratch it.
Okay. So.
There was a new list that was put up on OneDrive.
Oh.
We can't access, something's wrong with the OneDrive.
I think it's the OneDrive that's struggling.
So John's is now Rattenberry's?
Okay, so.
Rattenberry Auto Works?
Yeah.
Yes.
Tracy, can you share that OneDrive folder with all of us right now? We'll just take a pause because I think the link that you sent earlier is no longer valid. That may be.
So I need to make a motion to dispense with this vote.
You need to withdraw and then redo it?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to withdraw that particular license, given that they're out of business? We'll second it. Maybe you can do it that way? Is that the procedurally appropriate way, Chris?
Sounds good to me.
All right. Let's do it.
So I'll make a motion to amend the previous vote to withdraw John's Car Care John Kubek Owner and replace it with Rattenberry Auto Works.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Now we are at Split Rock Social Request for Extension of Hours on June 2, 2024.
It's the 22nd?
Oh, I'm sorry. June 22. Thank you, Jack. 2024. Anyone from Split Rock here?
I don't have anybody from Split Rock on here today.
Well, Ryan.
So they want to do a wedding at Split Rock? Is that? Yeah, and they wanted to, Tracy, what's going on?
They're looking to do a wedding at summer and stay over instead of 10 p.m. to 12 o'clock. And I'm having a hard time getting one right.
IT's been updating all the domains for security purposes. That could be what's happening.
Okay. 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 Would the board like more information from Ms. Armin about Split Rock? Do we want to continue this and take it up next time in early January? How do people feel?
I think, you know, they need to be here.
Okay. And she's not here in the audience at all?
No, I don't see either of the.
Okay. We'll invite her to our next meeting on January 9. Okay. Moving along. We're almost exactly back on track. So we have a common victualler license for Vinhan LLC doing business as Golf Tavern Common. Is there anyone here from that applicant? We saw them last week.
This is just the standard next stop.
Okay. And we got an extensive presentation from them last week. This is the carry on common vic license.
So a lot of self food.
Okay. Which we want them to do. I mean, I don't want to speak for the board, but given that we extended a beer and wine license, presumably we want them to eat food. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the common vic license for Vinhan LLC doing business as Golf Tavern?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. We are almost, now we're ahead of schedule. It's 7:28. I'm going to wait for two minutes to start the next agenda item because we're a little bit ahead. Thank you, Paul.
Did you get water out of that?
Yeah.
Nice deck.
So closer.
Red button?
No, red is hot. It's.
All right, at 7:30, we're going to move on to the next item as we continue to sign licensees so everyone can enjoy the holiday season in Cohasset. Now we are on the town hall discussion. Just by way of background, we, following the town election that I think everyone here is aware of and in the audience, we asked, we, the select board instructed town staff to begin doing a deep dive into the repairs that were necessary for town hall. We know previously that there have been some serious life safety issues that have been raised, hence the town obtaining a fire suppression quote for up to $1.5 million, as I discussed at town meeting when. as I discussed at town meeting, when describing the need for us to take action relating to our existing town hall situation. So following the vote, we began taking an even deeper dive into what we had to do, including from a co-compliance standpoint and what the ramifications were of where we are with respect to our town hall and next steps that would be required of Cohasset, including our obligations that we had. So one of those, part of that process was to have an inspection done, including a public safety consultant and code inspection and fire inspection. So we now know the results of that. And we heard, I believe, last week, we began to hear last week, some of those results. I would like to invite maybe briefly Mr. Helen to just briefly touch upon the results and what the, where we are in terms of inspection and co-compliance. Yes, our building inspector, Mr. John Helen, for those in the virtual world.
Sure. As we start now, we had two studies. One back in July, a second one last week. To, we did a full study myself, the code consultant and Nick from facilities. And then we followed up with our fire chief to walk through the building for us. So long and short of it, the conclusion was that the life, safety and occupancy of the building does not comply to current code. We did go back, look at the old prints, the work that was done back when the addition was put on.
I have to get a speaker.
That's better. So in looking at the, at the old plans, we studied what was done in the town hall in the 89 addition. We reviewed the existing conditions there and concluded through that review that the old town hall did not comply with the codes at the time when it wasn't completed properly. So therefore, we're left with a situation where it needs to be brought up to current standards for life safety. In the process now, we also, as you mentioned earlier, we're getting some cost estimates and a configuration of exactly what has to be done to meet that standard. But as it stands today, we're in a position where it doesn't meet the minimum standard for occupancy and life safety.
Yep. And Justin is working on helping us get a microphone here. Yeah, that will help the people outside, not inside.
Hope you're up at that time, you got to start off.
I'll have to turn around and talk.
Do you want to?
Thank you. There you go. Do you want to turn around?
No.
So the kind of.
May I suggest we start over?
Yeah, to repeat. To repeat what we said.
This is Mr. Helen, our building inspector. Mr. Helen.
What was the question?
Hold on, excuse me.
H A L L I N.
Okay, we're not going to entertain questions from the audience right now. I would like Mr. Helen to be able to just proceed, please.
So what we had done, here we have done two reports on the town hall from specialists. One in July and the most recent one was done last week. The conclusion basically was that currently the town hall does not meet the current safety standards of life safety and occupancy. We did go back and look at the plans from the original addition, 89, and reviewed those. They were not completed properly. Therefore, we're in a position that we have to bring the building up to current code. The building was never separated, so we did that. When we did the last review that was done with myself, the code consultant and Nick from facilities, in the follow-up to that, we did review the conclusions with the fire chief and the deputy fire chief as well to bring them up to date. And as it starts now, we're making a list of what the minimum standard is to bring the building up to code. So that's in summary where we're at right now.
And Mr. Helen, the process is you have to do a written decision in the near future, from what I understand. And if the town wants to appeal it to the state, we have approximately 45 to 60 days to appeal. Is that how it works?
Yes, it'd be 45 days.
Forty-five days.
So Mr. Helen, if this was another municipal building, a school, a library or something like that, would the building be deemed inhabitable?
No, it's the same standards we use on both public buildings and private buildings throughout the town.
Maybe asked a separate way, would this be issued an occupancy permit?
No.
So. Okay, so now we're at the point where, because we've dug in, we've done the deeper diligence, including based on that 2018 life safety report and followed up on that, we know we have a co-compliance situation and that we have, have to address it, including when this goes to the state. Unless we can appeal it and show that somehow there aren't these life safety issues, then we have a situation that we have to address, including from a co-compliance standpoint.
Yes, I get it, just to bring up to a minimum code.
Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Helen?
I do.
Yes, Jack.
So to clarify, what you're, what you're telling us is that the building can't be inhabited, it's in violation. And this building is not just a town, because it's a town hall, but any building, public or private, that doesn't have a proper fire system, right? It's, I don't want to use the word condemned, but it's unsafe and it cannot be occupied or used.
Right, it can't be occupied or used for the purpose as assembly and business, which is occupied for now. So that's where we have to make the improvements to get it up to the standard.
Were you able to get some idea of what those improvements would be, how long it would take? Does this, does this mean we have to go through the public bidding process and?
The improvements would require sprinkler building. In addition to that, we'll need to add the alarm system, which consists of smokes, pool stations, audible and detection. There are other safety features. And that's all tied in as one system with the alarm and the sprinklers.
So you couldn't do part of the building and say, well, part of it's okay and part of it isn't? It's an all or nothing?
Right, it has to be compliant because it's one system, not two buildings.
Does the board have any other questions for Mr. Helen? I have some procurement related questions for Ms. Leary. Thank you, Mr. Helen.
All right, thank you.
We'll take it just in case we need it again.
Right here, just in case. Ms. Leary, on the procurement side, I know that we had been trying to nail down exactly what we need, including with respect to fire suppression. And I believe that quote was up to $1.5 million, not including some of the other things we know we need to do. Do we have any sense of how long it will take us to do the full necessary repairs to get into compliance?
So without a formal bid process, the estimate is anywhere between 12 and 18 months to bring us to compliance. But we'll know better once we have engineered plans and drawings, send it out to bid, and then we can actually quote the work and the timeframe.
And we need the money as well. Okay. Okay. So at this point, we know this is the current state of the town hall and the state requirements and the fire and life safety requirements that were under, having done the necessary work to follow up on that 2018 report. And this is the conclusion of where we are for now. And so the board is facing what to do next. We, we have directed town staff to begin reviewing various lease options that will likely be necessary when we are required, vis-à-vis state requirements, to exit, particularly as, as we figure out what next with Old Town Hall, including the repair process. That is a subject of executive session, so we're not able to discuss that yet because we don't have anything non-public to discuss at this point. Executive session does cover lease negotiations. So these are options that we're looking at, including on a very short timeline in light of these state requirements that we have to comply with. So this is where we are at this point. Are there any comments the board has that you want to make?
I just want to clarify, where we really are is that we have a building that I don't want to use an alarmist phrase, but it kind of seems like it's been not deemed suitable for habitation or for use. And we have got to relocate all of our town employees out of that building quickly. And certainly, even if we appealed it in 45 days, we're going to have to deal with this. Is that an accurate assessment?
I think because we've begun peeling off the onion and doing the diligence to do the repairs, the first step we began doing was the life safety and repair issues in earnest to get these quotes necessary to do the repairs. As we said earlier, we're going to start creating this list. And the reality is, once we started to dig in, we realized that we're in a situation where we're not complying with code and we have to fix it. And it's going to take a long time to fix.
I have a question for the chief, that's all right.
Sure.
Chief, just a question for you, if you don't mind. Just your professional assessment of that building as it stands right now?
Well, it's unsafe and uninhabitable because it doesn't have a full fire protection system. But we need to address that. And it's safe for not only just the employees, but the visitors and the use of the auditorium.
Thank you, chief.
And I do want to add in, Paul, that we had some inkling that there were some issues, which is why we began so earnestly trying to find other options. I don't, none of the board recognized it was to this extent, but during the summer when we did do the plays, we had a special fire watch in effect. And we had emergency exit plans in place because of these fire issues. So there was a workaround that was in place during that time period before we knew the full extent because we didn't know that there were fire issues, hence the quote on the fire suppression that we've been trying to get.
Did you not limit it, wasn't it to 300 capacity down to two? I think just to keep it, you know, so we could get in and out of the building in a reasonable period of time.
Right, the occupancy limit was reduced. Reduced from 300 to 200 for the shows. Went with the fire watch. And then prior to the shows starting, it was some emergency lights, exit lights added and repair of different electrical that was done to the facilities.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. So at this point, we're, we're considering the various options that are out there and including options for relocation of town hall staff, as well as a continued list to try to figure out what the, what the cost is. Yes, if you'd like to come up, you can have a minute. Keep on track.
Thank you.
introduce yourself, name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Peter Longley. I live on Rustic Drive, been a Cohasset resident 20 years. I'm also a registered architect. I've been in the business 47 years. I'm the COO of CBT Architects in Boston. And I believe there's probably some alternative compliance options that you might have, such as if you were to remove the assembly use from the facility, you probably could still occupy it as a, as a B business use for the offices. It's just that the public assembly activities would not be able to take place during the remediation period.
You're saying shut down the old town hall?
No, I'm saying that you could still use it for offices and the public would still be able to come in and conduct town, town business. And this is my professional opinion, there's, there's always alternative compliance that you can do while you're remediating the building. It's just that you've changed the use from combined business and assembly to solely assembly for, solely business for a period of time until the assembly, until the building is, the life safety systems have been brought up to current code.
And the people working in the building, is contract just supposed to work around them? Or are they supposed to work around the contracts? Is that, you have me a little puzzled, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, that's normally what you would do in a building that's, that's being occupied. You might unoccupy an area that's being worked on. It moves, moves some people to a different area while that area is being completed. It's a little bit of a, you know, checkers game, but you're moving people around while you're, while you're continuing to occupy the building, which would be far less expensive than renting a trailer or alternative space and moving everybody out of the building and having it be completely vacant while all the work is being done.
That's just the reason I'm taking into consideration the people that work in that building. So that's.
And the public.
And the public. So my thoughts kind of lie with them. I mean, everything you said does merit, but, you know, there is a human element to it, I think.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
Yes, I have a question.
Why don't you come up, give me one minute?
My name is Mike Dick, 27 Parker Avenue. My question is, or to the select board and to any others that might come up, could we be more specific in the part of town hall that we're referring to? So town hall is at 41 Highland Avenue. The so-called Old Town Hall, built in the 1850s, is one structure. And the annex, which was opened in 1987, the annex so-called, is another structure. I'm having a little bit of confusion in understanding which buildings. Is it the old building? Is it the annex? Is it both? I understood, or I thought, that the annex did have fire systems in place. Perhaps some may be missing. But I'm confused on which buildings we're talking about. So as we go forward, could we be really specific on which building we're referring to? One, the other or both? Thank you.
We'd ask our building inspector to answer that question because.
Yeah, we know the answer, but Mr. Helen, I'm a little hesitant.
In 1987, there was an addition put on. Because the addition was not completed with full separation put in, there was never two buildings. So in the code stand, it's one building, not two separate buildings. So we can't look at it as two separate buildings because the work was never completed back in 1978 or 87. So, so it is one building now as it stands.
And there's no occupancy permit that was issued either?
I could not find one in the archives at that time.
So technically, speaking of that occupancy permit, that just pertains to 41 Highland Avenue as a whole, including the annex.
Correct.
So technically, the whole building is found and unenhanced. So technically, the whole building is found and unenhanced.
And the sprinkler system is one system, so you can't have half a system to protect the whole building.
Any other comments, questions? Come on up, Mr. Brewer.
Clark Brewer, North Main Street, also an architect. And I did take a look into the, that there are some options with the sprinkler systems. The other architect, was it Peter?
Yes.
Mentioned changing the occupancy from mixed use to just office space so that the physical operation could be maintained, maybe staged. I think it makes sense to review whatever options might be in the best interest of the town and the people that work in Town Hall moving forward. Obviously, if it's a 45-day window, the state marshal can be contacted in terms of the Mass General laws and the protocols and responsibilities, that things would be set in motion pretty quickly. But I agree with Peter, there may be some options in terms of making some minor changes that could keep the building in use while it goes through a transition to what, whether it's a full long-term occupancy or it's a short-term occupancy with some other Town Hall option that's exercised. Oh, I did have the requisite code sections relative to sprinkler. I'd like to submit that for the, to the selectmen for their records.
I thought you were going to hand me the occupancy permit maybe for 1987. No such luck, huh? Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Any other questions or comments? Nope. All right, we are almost back on track. So one thing that we had talked about was doing a survey and a possible public forum. You know, that was before we realized maybe that we were over a barrel from a potential timing perspective. I think that that still makes sense in terms of some sort of mechanism for fulsome public feedback, particularly once we start to hit upon some options. I think it probably makes sense, and I invite the rest of my board to weigh in on this, but once we have some more tangible options to present to the public, that probably makes more sense at this point.
Just for an overview, and I'm sure that we have some knowledgeable people in lease options, you can find office space, you can lease it. You can lease it for a long or short term. Short term, you're not bound by it. Probably short term, you have to be aware of, is that if you lease something short term and you're in there and you want to extend, you're kind of at the mercy of the landlord. You need to be in, there's also concepts of lease purchase, lease with an option, rental sales agreements. My understanding of the legalities is the town meeting passed an authorization to purchase One Pleasant Street. Town vote was about whether the town would approve a tax increase and override in order to raise money. Actually, we looked into it, two separate concepts. I mean, town can go ahead and buy it, but there's no money because it would require a tax increase, and the voters said no more taxes, or at least no taxes on this particular thing. So wherever we go, these are the type of options, and these are standard real estate options. You know, we all know them: purchase, lease, lease with an option, rental sales. Short term, you sometimes get a little bit, a little flexibility, you're not tied in, but once you're in there, the landlord can up it. If you have an option, that can be an attractive way to kind of lock in a price if you do decide down the line to purchase it. So these are the types of things that are standard real estate ways to deal with situations where you need space. So this isn't any real difference in concept between what a business would do or what you would do if you were buying something, say you're opening a business, or even buying your own house. So there's no rocket science here. It's just, you know, when we look at it, these are the type of things that we have to do. What's, at least from my perspective, what is unfortunate right now is that we now know that unless Peter's option works out well, which would be very nice that it did, but we might well be in a position where the town has kind of a gun to our heads, and we have got to do this, and we have to do it quickly. It's not a good position to be in to be owning property that has code violations and especially fire violations that is occupied by a lot of people.
Thank you, spring. Are there any comments online? Sorry, sorry to catch you mid-cough.
No, no, that's all right. Don't worry. I do not have any comments online.
Yes, please.
So, Madam Chair, back to your original, you know, introduction of this final topic about a survey or public forum. I think we've all heard anecdotally what the historic portion of 41 Highland Ave means to a lot of people in Cohasset. It's a very emotional building for a lot of reasons. The history is part of it. We've all had moments in Town Hall, our first vote, our prom, our kids' prom, social dances. None of you probably remember, maybe you do, Jay, right? You know, with the cornets from Duxbury. So it's a very emotional position to take when we talk about, you know, we wish, Mr. Dick, it could be two separate buildings. We wish we could have a historic Town Hall and the Annex and deal with each one separately, but we can't. So I think it's important that we do get community feedback on 41 Highland Ave so that we're not making decisions based on anecdotes and emotion about really where does the town want to go with that address and that structure. So however we do a survey, Survey Monkey, if we send it out, we should, I think we should do something.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore. Anything else? All right, we have two minutes before the zoning bylaw committee update slash... Yes. Come on up, please.
Again, Pete Longley, 12 Rustic Drive. So I'm one of the people who voted to not fund the project. I frankly would have voted to fund a $10 million project if it was to renovate the existing building. I realize that that's probably not enough money, but a homeowner would look at their home and they would make a list of all the things that they wanted to do, and they have a limited amount of money. I would suggest that if you spent 10 million, that same $10 million on a laundry list of the $10 million most important things, that that would put a substantial dent in the concerns that people have about the condition of the building. And then you can revisit in subsequent fiscal years how you might go about finishing off the rest of the list.
With additional tax?
With additional funds.
Tax increases?
Yes, unless, of course, some of it could be paid out of the current operating budget.
Zoning bylaw committee update slash housing choice. Mr. Callahan, please join us.
Tom Callahan, Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Committee. Start tonight with a presentation from our consultants regarding the housing choice legislation and some suggested areas to create the necessary district. I took the liberty earlier today of identifying the parcels, a little more specificity so you know where they are.
Just wait a second.
I guess this is a hot topic.
Mr. Callahan, before you go into specifics, and I think that a part of this is probably going to be in the presentation, but for those watching in the audience, would you mind just giving like a paragraph, like a plain language background on where we are? What is housing choice and where we are?
Okay, so 2022, the state passed some legislation that's known as housing choice. It basically is creating a zoning requirement on communities with MBTA stations to create a district where multifamily housing is allowed as of right. It is not suggesting that it will be built, it is just saying you have to create the zoning areas so that it can be built. Most of it has to be within close proximity to the station. We have two stations, Cohasset and North Situate that apply. And it requires a minimum amount of acreage, it requires a certain density that is far denser than anything that's allowed in our bylaw, and it results in a minimum number of units that would have to be possibly built in the town. We can do it as an overlay district, we can request mixed use, we can't mandate it. We cannot dictate, for example, all one-bedroom apartments or all two-bedroom apartments. We have to have, allow for a mix. There can be families that are there. And right now, we're required to do, according to the chart and the formula that the state has come up with, 43 acres. It's, I want to say it's 15 units per acre, I think is the density, and the minimum is 637 units. Which is, the legislation says it's not, it's supposed to max out as 15% of your housing stock. For us, it seems to max out closer to 19%. There's little quirks from town to town. It has to be implemented by the end of 2024. We're proposing to implement it at the next town meeting. And the presentation that UTIL is going to do is that we gave them, on the zoning bylaw committee, some marching orders to look at it in just as an overlay district on Route 3A commercial areas to not bring it into residential districts. And so they've identified properties in proximity to the North Cohasset, with the Cohasset Station and the North Situate Station for your consideration and for the committee's consideration. So that's where we are in a nutshell. They are going to tell you they're going to propose more units than the minimum, and there's a reason for that, but...
Tom, I'm sorry to interrupt, but a part of what makes the housing choice legislation arduous from the town standpoint is, if I recall correctly, we not only have to identify the areas, but it has to be, quote, "buildable areas." Like, you can't just say, "Go build in that swamp." Like, the swamp is our 43 acres, and so it takes us, the town, resources, i.e. consultants and volunteers, to try to figure out where are these areas within the appropriate...
Right, right. So, you know, it can't be using a term that elsewhere found in zoning law, it can't be an illusory district. So one of the parcels we've identified is mostly wetlands, but that's there because the district has to be contiguous, so we needed that as a piece of property as a link to two others. Contiguous can also be across the street, so you will see the properties identified around the Cohasset Station, there's some on the station side of the street and some on the other side of the street.
And...
Do you want me to put up a presentation?
Yeah, you can get them teed up, sure.
And what is the penalty for non-compliance?
There, I believe there's various grants that can be withheld, and I believe the Attorney General's office is taking a rather aggressive litigation stance with some towns that are fighting this.
Even towns that don't have the, quote-unquote, "infrastructure" that bears this burden?
Yeah. I'm aware of one in Central Mass that I don't even think has a station. I think that they're caught in this because they're a town next to a town with a station, and they're a small town and they don't have the infrastructure of this, but, you know, we can critique this all we want, and I do personally think they took a one-size-fits-all approach, but it has been, the formula's been tweaked a little bit. It did lower the number of potential units for Cohasset from what the first go-round was. The first go-round was 750. So it's interesting, but, you know, like in our situation, there's very little open space we're designating. These are already built and developed properties. It is going to require somebody to buy existing properties, probably string together a few of them to get the requisite size of a property that you would need, tear down, rebuild. So it's going to be an expensive proposition. You know, there's no guarantee this will work, but the state is looking for solutions because of the things, the 40Bs and Rs and Ss and all the other legislation that has tried to promote affordable housing hasn't succeeded in the state's mind. We still have a housing shortage in the state.
Tom, if I understand correctly, our obligation ends at setting up the zoning that would enable someone to string together the properties, tear them down, rebuild them as...
Right. Yeah, all we have to do is allow, allow the zoning to occur at the required densities as of right.
So the town isn't on the hook to build them? It's just setting up the zoning?
No, that's all we have to do.
Would you like to present now, Tom?
Sure, well, I'm going to, if the UTIL folks there, they were going to show this, they were going to take care of this one. Okay.
We're here. If I could share, I could move through the slides fairly rapidly. I think I need permission. Can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, thank you for letting us present. I'm Matthew Latell, Principal at UTIL. I'm here with Treskina Tureen and Sharan Zhang, who's, both of whom have been helping to work on this. We were engaged through a grant from Mass Housing Partnership, and we've been cycling through some options to provide some technical assistance to the town to navigate what a compliant district might look like. And so we have a few choices that I'll walk you through. One, we call the sort of first try-based model, and we've, based on subsequent conversations with the zoning bylaw, with zoning bylaw committee and Tom, we have some other options, again, for sort of consideration. I think Tom pretty much summarized what we have to do very well. It's, we need a multifamily district where development can occur as a right. As Tom mentioned, the responsibility for Cohasset specifically is a district that is 638 units, in theory, 43 acres in size. And then there are some other requirements that have to do with how it's distributed. So 20% located in the transit area, that's within a half a mile of Cohasset Station, a minimum density of 15 acres. And if the district, so to speak, is in different chunks, at least one of those districts must contain at least 50% of the total land area. And each individual chunk has to be at least five acres. So those are the sort of rules of the road. The state has provided a, let's call it a mathematical model. It's an extremely long and involved spreadsheet, which, into which you put the parameters, the parcels that you're considering, their sizes. You input different parameters like units per acre or floor area ratio or setbacks, any number of things, and it basically estimates what a number is. And I should say, it is an estimation. Sometimes we've tested these, and sometimes they're pretty good. Other times, eh, you know, there are quirks, but... but, but the model is the model and it's the agreed-upon sort of tool that we're using to verify compliance. So the sub-districts that we're considering are around the Cohasset Station. As Tom mentioned, another small area we call 3A South. That's near the North Situate Station. That's the sort of magenta area. And then we were asked at one of our more recent meetings to also consider this little sort of blue area down here near Beechwood Street. And I'll cycle through some options that include some or all of these in, in different proportions. So upfront, we have option one, which is, consists of the Cohasset Station and 3A South, which we presented on November eighth. We've since done a sort of what we call an option one A, which is a slightly reduced acreage in the Cohasset Station. We've looked at a second option, which was to eliminate the 3A South. In other words, a district that is only in the Cohasset Station. That also has a sub-variant, which is to reduce its acreage but to slightly increase its density to maintain compliance. And then a third option, which includes all three of these districts, obviously with smaller acreage in each, but sort of the total combining for a certain kind of compliance. So that's Cohasset Station plus 3A South plus New Beechwood. Okay, so option one consists, again, Cohasset Station, North Situate. And, and just a little sidebar, there was a, there was a very good question about wetlands or unbuildable area. The, the model is linked to GIS. It subtracts unbuildable land. You, by including it in a district, you don't get an additional sort of capacity tax. But as Tom mentioned, sometimes we will use a parcel that even may mostly be encumbered by wetlands to maintain contiguity. So what contiguity means in this, in this sense is that all these parcels are touching each other and there's just enough sort of connection across the street to consider all of these areas contiguous. And then the, the 3A South, right on the border, in an area that I believe has a little bit of commercial use, we were asked to explore what that looks like. These are the parameters that we put into the model. So a maximum of three stories, setbacks at ten, ten-foot front, ten-side, twenty-rear in Cohasset Station, fifteen-foot, ten-foot, twenty-foot in the 3A South sub-district. We've assigned a minimum of one parking spaces per unit. And we've controlled for the density by setting the maximum units per acre at fifteen. What this sort of spits out when we put into the model is approximately seven hundred and ninety units over an acreage of about six sixty-three for a sort of model, what we call a modeled gross sub-district density of, of fifteen. So in terms of the density, we are just barely compliant here. And it appears that we have, in terms of the units, some excess capacity in this, in this scenario. We looked at something that might get us a little bit lower on the unit count. So we zoomed into Cohasset Station and we sort of selectively removed a parcel to see that, what that would do for us. And what we get is, as we expected, a slightly lower number. In, in the capacity, we're down to seven hundred and forty-three while still maintaining that sort of minimum fifteen units per acre. And I should explain what a sub-district density denominator is. Essentially, district acreage is everything you see in that, those colored zones. The density denominator is that area minus the unbuildable area. So that would include wetlands, town-owned lands, roadways, that sort of thing. And so this becomes the operative denominator. This is why wetlands don't sort of work against you in terms of your density. So that was one in one A. We noticed that the Cohasset Station was getting us quite close to being compliant all on its own. So we explored, as I mentioned, that we've, we've excluded this, this 3A South district. If we keep the Cohasset Station district as we had it in option one, we get down to six hundred and eighty units. We maintain our fifteen units per acre. And we're sort of compliant across the board. So the total number of units has been reduced to one-twelve over, over the option one that included that additional area. Option two A, we take the same area, but again, see what it looks like if we remove a parcel or want to make the acreage lower. In order to do that, to keep the, the unit capacity numbers up, we would have to nudge up the maximum units per acre to sixteen. And that gets us to six seventy-five. So it's, it's similar. We have a slightly higher density, I should say, slightly more comfortable in terms of compliance. But again, it's, it's in the same kind of ballpark of compliance and is very simple in that it's only one district, all of which, almost all of which is within that sort of MBTA half-a-mile zone. The third option, we were asked to explore some additional areas. There was a, an area to the north on the border, I believe with Hull. What's it called?
West Corner.
West Corner, yes, thank you. We took a careful look at that. It did not seem conducive there. I, I think there are some small commercial uses up there, but there are a lot of small lots, mostly single-family. And by the time we got to a district that was, you know, five acres, it, it did not feel consistent with some of the, the ideas that we'd heard expressed before, which was that we were trying to minimize the, the number of single-family parcels that were impacted. However, the Beechwood Street was another sort of corridor with some small commercial uses that was recommended to us. And that seemed to be slightly more appropriate. Because we've added this third sort of section, we were able to remove even more of the Cohasset Station area. So we've removed these parcels here and this sort of interstitial chunk right there. We believe that we are still, even though we're just barely sort of touching here, that this will probably meet the requirements of contiguity. We've maintained the 3A South district as we had it in the first option. And then we've added this district here, which runs along Duane Street and Beechwood. If we add all three districts, we get to six hundred and seventy-three units with an average density of fifteen point three. So this is also sort of, I would say, in that sort of comfortably compliant sort of range and is, again, like some of the other subsequent scenarios that we've looked at. A hundred and twenty units or less, less over our sort of very first preliminary option one. And here's a summary of, of all the various scenarios that we've looked at. Option one, one A, which is slightly reduced. Option two, two A, again, a little bit reduced. And then finally, option three, that we just saw. And I think the, the, the question perhaps for the town is, does it make more sense to concentrate in one area, namely the Cohasset Station? Or is it preferable to have this spread around the town into smaller pieces, as we've shown in sort of option three? Or is there some sort of in-between scenario that includes two different areas? That, one, both of which are sort of within reasonable proximity to a commuter rail?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it. We have about nine minutes left, so I want to make sure we leave some time for questions. So I, I just want to ask the board first if you have any questions.
Yeah.
Any questions about the information you've got?
No, I think the, uh, the, uh, to deal with, I don't think we have a choice to deal with. The question is, I think option three, spreading it around town, might be attractive. But that ultimately is a, is a decision of the select board. And I think it's important that these come to the select board and then the town meeting in, in chunks that are understandable. Because if it gets too large, you don't understand it and we risk it failing, as it did two and a half years ago, three years ago.
If I may say, I, I don't want to get into an argument with Matthew, but, you know, the marching orders from the committee has been stay out of the residential areas. And I, perhaps one of us at the meeting a couple of weeks ago asked to consider Beechwood and West Corner. But for me personally, that's off the table. Because they're in residential areas. They, they're small commercial districts that abut residential areas. I don't think any, you know, we, we've seen some ideas thrown out about a fortyB somewhere. I won't say where, but, you know, it was large-scale opposition to that. I don't think anyone wants to see projects of this size and density anywhere close to a residential area. That's number one. But, you know, just so you all know, the bylaw committee is going to deal with this on the eighteenth after getting some of your feedback. We're going to be planning right now, tentatively, for a public forum on January tenth. The other thing in that presentation I just want to point out is that there was a little cul-de-sac near this Cohasset Station. That's the Situate Hill Road. That is one property. It's made up of four parcels, but it's one-owned property. It is the only one at the moment that's vacant. It has a permit to do something, but it's the only one there. And, you know, so A, I don't think it theoretically can be broken up by taking some of the parcels out. It's, it's a single-owned entity at eight acres at this point. Secondly, to the extent the state thinks towns are getting cued about putting in areas that are never going to be possible to be buildable for this, that's the only place that is. And it's, at the moment, at the moment. Because the project that's been permitted hasn't been built and hasn't even been started. So I, I don't know that we, I, I don't think it's feasible to break that property up, more than anything else. But anyway.
I just had a couple of comments, Tom, that the, the selectman might be interested in. I think there's a preference for option two. It's simpler to manage, you know, in a way. And in relation to what Ellen asked, what is the cost? Like, what, 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 what are we going to be penalized if we don't do this? Or don't do this by the deadline that the state wants? And we don't know that for sure. The consultant might have some examples. We've heard some housing authority money has been withheld in, in towns, you know, sort of to the middle part of, or more western areas. But we, we don't know exactly what the, the risk is. But I think what the consultant's done with option two is, is shown us a way to fit this zoning in a reasonable location. It's sort of near Avalon. I think it, it's going to make sense to evaluate and look at the parcels around this and make sure that they really work. They've, they've set the front setback at ten feet. And in these zoning districts, highway business and technology business, they both have fifty-foot of frontage. And it probably makes sense to review the numbers based on the underlying frontage, I mean, front, front setback, not frontage. That's a, that's a different animal. That way, because I can't really imagine having any kind of apartment ten feet off of the, right away on 3A. That would, that would look a little weird. But that would also, if we set it back, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong. If we increase the front setback to fifty or something close to that, which is the underlying zoning, we'd probably have to have an increased parcel or two because the area that's buildable would be reduced. Is that right?
Not necessarily. And we can, we can explore this. One of the glitches in the model is that it does not know how to compute setbacks. And the reason is that it only knows the parcel size. It doesn't know what's front and rear and side. And we've noticed this problem. We had this problem in Arlington where suddenly their capacity was twenty thousand. In fact, it was more like seven.
Yeah.
So we can, that's something that we can drill down on. My, based on what I've seen in other municipalities, what's, I don't think the setbacks are what is limiting the capacity. I think it's the units per acre right now because they're, they're relatively low.
Sure.
I believe we can, we can increase the setbacks and not hurt the capacity.
That's great, that's great. So six hundred and twenty-eight units as a number, it's kind of a scary number. It's three Avalons, right? And, but I think UTIL has demonstrated that what's proposed for option two has the least amount of impact on schools and likely, likely development. And we should be glad we're not Newton because they're, they targeted ten thousand units for those guys.
And Newton, Newton just passed their, whatever they needed to pass. And they've got multiple, multiple stations in Newton that they had to deal with. So they did spread it out. But I've been in touch with Newton officials and they claim they're doing minimal compliance. But still, it's a significant impact to Newton.
I think minimal compliance as an approach makes sense.
Well, that's what this is, too. That's what this is. So the other thing I want you to consider about when you're considering a south-sided North Situate, just remember that Situate, just over the other side of the line, is going to be building there, too. And to the extent, you know, we've considered traffic impacts on a given area, you know, remember that whatever we build on our town line with Situate is also going to be larger on the Situate side. And so there's going to be a lot of traffic impact in that area as much as there would be by our station.
I don't have no issue with that. It's a question I keep going back to. I keep saying, why are we always earmarking one spot per unit? That really, I gotta say.
I'm sorry, say that again?
We always earmark one parking spot per unit. That, that bugs the hell out of me. I gotta be honest with you, it just does.
All right, so right now, we've, we've done that for the village. That's where that exists at the moment. I know, no, I understand that. The other thing I want to tell you, what has to happen with this is that we have to, A, designate the overlay district. We have to add uses for this district, which are going to be quite limited because it only tells, you know, there's only thing. And then we're going to have to add dimensional requirements to this. And so we, no, so then we can address setbacks, frontage, number of parking spaces per unit. We, we, we will do all that. We're going to have to do that because we're going to have to create dimensions for this district that are going to be unique for this district as, as well. So that will all get done. The question is then, how does it impact the model? And, and then again, we're being proposed here three stories. Who says we can't go to four or five? That, of course, was the question. Do we have the fire equipment to deal with a building that tall? I don't know that.
Well, this is still, this is an overlay district.
Yes, there's still things we have to do and think about in, in doing this.
But could we start at a baseline again? We've been doing this before. Remember, everything is planned up. A space and a half or a one parking space or a space and a half. What's a space and a half? A car and a bicycle?
Average.
So exactly. So why aren't we starting, basically, it's two spots. It's, we're in a two-car society at the very least.
I think this is probably a good segue to where we're headed next. But I just want to make sure the whole board has a chance to win because we are going to move, we're going to keep moving. We've got Moschino in the audience. We're already ten minutes beyond. Ellen, is there something you want to? Ellen, is there something you wanted to weigh in on the immediate feedback on the districts?
I like confining it to just District Long Cohasset Station. I just have a very naive question. Looking at the maps and the parcels, buildings and businesses on them.
That's right.
Yeah, that's what we have to do.
And they're not likely to be torn down for this.
Not likely.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, so to Mr. Plex's earlier points, all we're doing to be compliant is approving the overlay district. And then it's up to independent developers to come in, negotiate with those business owners and say, I'll give you this for Hingham Long if I can have your parcel so I can build 400 units.
It defies logic to why the state picked this approach because whether it actually results in new units being built is completely speculative at this point in every community that's addressing it.
Just tagging on to that, we are going to get questions when we come to town meeting about impact on sewer, schools, traffic, fire safety. So we just need to make sure this is well-socialized, and we need to make sure we can answer those questions.
As I said, our first targeted forum is January 10.
I can't remember if you identified a particular, well, you're on the zoning bylaw working group, so you get plenty of time for input. Was there a particular district? I saw Cohasset, the standalone district near Cohasset Station, like Ms. Mar. Is that?
Me? No. No, I prefer 3A cell to a Situate.
Okay. But that's not a plus, plus something.
Cohasset Station, you need to, okay. I personally prefer just Cohasset Station. I think that's easier to keep everything concentrated in one overlay district. We already have multi-family housing there. We've got Avalon, we've got the TOD. We already have that vibe going on down there.
That, by the way, would be in the district.
Yeah, and it's good proximity to the train for people who live there. I mean, we want to think about, too, our future residents. We want them to have proximity because they do.
Then they might not need that other car. Or they're less likely to need that other car if there's a train option.
Maybe they're retired and they want to, you know, try to see, you know, if we could do commercial on the first floor and have a little more variety of our housing there. But, okay, so.
By the way, I am not wed to any of the three things. What I'm wed to, as a select board representative, is making sure that we have an efficient way that moves forward and that when we have things that are ready for town meeting, that they're understandable, digestible, and get passed. We don't want a debacle. And I really think that it's very important that we get input from various constituencies beforehand. So that's what I'm doing, is eye roll.
The Plankford would have to hold public meetings on this, and we'll want to tweak the language, as Tom said. We'll want to improve what's set up to the extent possible.
Again, the warrant article, we'll have to amend Article 3, 4, and 5 to put in the necessary components for this. It can come in all one article because this whole thing is going to rise and fall as one proposal. If you don't mind to put you on the spot, just so we have feedback, you have a preference of how the districts should look?
I lean towards option two for the same reasons that have been discussed earlier, that it keeps the high-density area. That's already kind of a high-density area. That, as opposed to dropping it somewhere where it wouldn't fit in quite as well. But I don't feel strongly on that, but that's my leaning.
Okay, okay.
So why don't we move on to quickly?
Thank you.
We might have to do another topic. But in terms of prepping for annual town meeting,
All right, just, yeah, very quickly. I mean, the first issue is money. I guess we've run out of money for town council. I've spoken to Chris that I'd like to have a meeting between myself, Chris, town council, preferably you, to discuss the scope of their work. There is a difference of opinion on that. And I'd like to take a slightly different approach with this next round. In the next round, I am proposing that, oh, and then money. There's four, two possible areas we would explore. Under Article 5, it would help to have a consultant who could tell us what the ramifications of that. If we're going to sell these two particular changes to the town, we'd need backup for it.
What?
Well, particularly discussing changing frontage setbacks and that kind of thing. And the other thing is making a switch in how we deal with house size. Basically, switching, as many communities are now doing residential, switching to floor area ratio as the primary measure. It's not so much the concept of floor area ratio. It's then picking the right number of what that ratio should be. We have a lot of background data. We've developed on that, but we really would need an expert to crunch some numbers and look at the end. I haven't gotten a price tag on that. And I've, you know, I'd like to talk to MAPC. We kind of had like a preliminary email, but nothing in detail. And I'd like to maybe lay out the scope for it and get a quote from them of what that might be. But, you know, as far as making sure our parking regulations are up to snuff, I think internal in the committee at our last meeting, we have someone who's going to be able to get that information. Really, I don't think there's anything else that we would propose that would require expert backup that we couldn't handle. Anyway, then the last thing about those two money issues and town council issues is, you know, it's ambitious. I'd like to get this done, except for understanding that there are any new initiatives about climate change, climate resiliency, new forms of alternative energy. Nobody's ready to deal with that. I thought there was a multi-board thing that I participated in a conference call a few months ago. I spoke in Montana yesterday. I'm not sure there is such an effort going on, but that stuff would be in the fall, that would be in the future. It's ambitious. It's not as ambitious, you know, to me, this isn't rocket science. I would ask you not to make it overly ambitious and just let us see where we get. A lot of it is just reorganizing the bylaw. There are some changes consolidating districts that are not, while they are changes, they are not controversial. The controversy is if we make any changes to substantive numbers in Article 5, which, I'd vote on those separately. So one part doesn't kill the whole warrant article. So there's two articles. I've kind of narrowed them down to 10. Two of them are even optional, so eight, some of which might have multiple parts to avoid, you know, make sure the votes are separate on separate distinct items. But it's manageable. It is manageable. And a lot of it has been written, something we have to talk about with council and how we would proceed with the final drafting of this. But it's all very doable. And it's tough to keep breaking up this bylaw into pieces. It needs to get put together. So I would just ask you to let us go. Let's see how far we get. Again, we had a more ambitious agenda for the fall. We didn't get to it all. Might still prove to be the case. But right now, we got to straighten out our relationship with council. We need to straighten, we need some money for a consultant. That's our short-term needs. And, you know, town meeting creeps up on you pretty quick and when everything has to be ready, so.
Well, I think that's a good segue.
And as far as public outreach goes, again, January 10, about housing choice, we tentatively have calendered January 28 to start a forum on other stuff. So we do intend to reach out to the public frequently during this process.
Okay, so let's take pause. I just want to invite the board to, I've got the memo. Are there any immediate reactions that the board has?
The only comment that I have is, this is a pretty comprehensive thing. Of course, Tom created this, thank you, Tom. Hasn't been voted on by the bylaw committee, which is a select board committee charge. Original charge was to have the town council give us kind of an overview and do all the, the basic work and make the code consistent with the Massachusetts Commonwealth statutes to make it easier for people to understand what they cannot do, what their neighbors cannot, judges to understand what our intent is. So I think we are going to need to have continuing involvement in town council. We just have to be sure that this does, there's been a lot of use of town council. And Tom, I know you felt it necessary, but we have to be very careful about that. And the other thing is, one of the things, it has been a difficult time, is that the, as a committee, it requires, it's a little bit more awkward to get things done. And I know one model is the long-range financial planning, which was constituted as a working group. And a working group means you have some more flexibility. You don't have quorum issues. And you can be a little bit more effective because I think we do have to move it on. But I also think that we really need to understand, and this is judging from past history, that you have to be very careful that you give the citizens of town meeting something that's digestible and will get passed. And if it takes longer than we would have liked to do that, that's fine if we get it passed.
Okay, thank you, Jack.
I just have a question. How are we utilizing town council? Is everybody able to go at them?
Well, no, no, it's, so, well.
Do we have, do we have a single point of contact? I mean, I know they're not cheap. So is anybody able to just call them, utilize their services, cross-currents, or is there a single point of contact, being you as the chair?
Generally, yes. Well, generally, yes, on a day-to-day basis when drafts are being thrown about. But town coun, well, one of the things I want to change is that it's town council writing, us commenting. I want to reverse that to this co-ground because a lot of it, you know, very frankly, the work, I've done a lot of work on this, all right? And the approach needs to be different. The town council has given us their diagnostic on the entire bylaw. They've done that part of their work. I believe the scope of this committee is a little broader, but nevertheless, town council has also been coming to every one of our meetings. So in that sense, town council is hearing from all of us simultaneously and getting comments, then goes back, drafts something. Usually, I see it first, and then it gets distributed. And then we discuss it at the next meeting. We're meeting, we've been meeting every other week, two, we had two weeks a month since, I don't know, May, April of last year, all through the summer. Quorum is no longer a problem, thankfully, but, you know, there's other issues. But that's, you know, I don't, so I don't think there's been abuse of it. It's just that they're there. Town council's been there for everything, at every stage, at every meeting, and needing to hear the feedback of all of us. And that's how it's worked. I'm surprised. I actually never was privy to what the budget number was. But, you know, if it's gone, it's gone. Yeah, well, if it's gone, it's gone. It surprises me, but.
To answer your question, the only one from the committee who's accessed the judge aside from meetings has been Tom, the chair.
Question, we're saying town council, town council. Is that Judith Cutler?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, Judge Cutler.
I thought she was more like a consultant.
No, no, she, no, she, she's a member, she works as a member.
Understood.
And hit mandatory retirement, I think that's why.
Okay, so it's 8:44 right now. And I think, Tom, I think maybe substantive feedback. I think what the board needs to do is we need to go back to the original charge and take a look at some of the priorities.
You need to go back also to the charge of the working group before, which there seems to be, there seems to be a different.
Well, we need to go back to this select board's charge because it's not a prior select board, it's this select board. And I think a part of the issue is, we've been doing a lot of reorg, and we keep telling the town, okay, we'll get to like the things that people care about, like parking, but we want to make sure that we get to that. And I do think that trying to cram all this into annual town meeting is just not going to happen. I think it's way too ambitious. And I applaud your ambition, but knowing what else we have happening.
If you think it's, well, as I've said before, if it's necessary to have a separate session of zoning, let's give it the priority that it deserves.
Including the money and the time.
And the, all I'm going to say is that, you know, the charges I've seen it is not only to deal with reorganization and cleaning that up. And many of these are the final steps of it, in consolidating articles and getting it organized in a fashion that's usable and readable, but also to deal with substance. And we dealt with a little in the previous two town meetings.
Now, what's a little?
But this was the one to do it. Because it is Article 5 that is where the substantive change will happen if we decide to go down those road. And I keep emphasizing "if" because those decisions haven't been made. We want, there's things we want to study. And then we will all, town in these forums, our committee, our committee, we will decide whether we actually go forward with them. And if we choose not to, this becomes a much less daunting town meeting. We'll have a reorganized, cleaned-up bylaw, and we move on.
I think we need to figure out together, do we realistically have the money putting for ATM? And how does that happen? Because right now, we're dealing with, you know, it's not like we're in an ATM situation where we're going to hit July and then all of a sudden have a new budget, right? We're coming into this budget cycle. Do we have the money for a consultant to do what you think we need to do under Article 5? And what are we going to prioritize if we don't? And what can we realistically ask you as volunteers to get done if we don't have a lot of money? And how to work through the situation with KP? It may come to the point where we just ask you all as volunteers to do what you're going to do. And then we start putting final products in front of KP to try to minimize the legal bills at this point and go from there.
That is what I suggest.
Yeah.
That is what I suggest because the work is all, the work has already been done.
But I think that this is, it strikes me, we need to do a little more work before we start having public forums on exactly, like consolidation of districts? Is that more important than parking, than addressing the 1.5 issue?
They're not controversial issues and can both be dealt with at a town meeting. I give more credit to the citizens of town, you know, attendees at town meeting. They dealt with four complicated financial articles in a fall town meeting. They can deal with these. I'm telling you that, understanding that I take this as this is all easy stuff to me, but it is not as complicated as you think. And don't make it more complicated than it needs to be. If you continue to let me explain what would come, how it would look, what the articles would look like, I took a shot at that already, so.
So next meeting, when's your next zoning?
Well, we're meeting the 18th, but we've dedicated that at the moment just to deal with what the fallout from tonight's housing choice. No, and then, because, for example, housing choice, I mean, again, there aren't a lot of choices to deal with there. And we'd like to have that all wrapped up and done in perfect world by the end of January. Have it written, ready to go, so we can focus on these other things. Have excellent feedback. We're going to chew that out, and then we're going to bring it to the community on the 10th.
And so what I would suggest is, housing choice sounds like we're in a, we're moving. We've got information, we've got consultants already. We were heading in the right direction. For the other stuff, I think it makes sense for you all to come up with a zoning bylaw working group consensus, vote recommendation to us as to ATM. Maybe it's in there, but to like really outline what the timing is. So we can look at this because I am concerned with ATM. If we're going to start prioritizing, where are we going to start to make those? How are we going to do that? Are we going to do a two-day? Are we going to sequence it somehow? I think we should get ahead of those issues and make decisions.
Okay. I know you're not meeting until after the new year. It creeps up on us quickly, so.
Yep, that's why I'm asking when you.
I'm suggesting we may have to have a dialogue almost as a regular agenda item, for you guys to fill it up.
Love zoning.
All right, thank you all for your attention. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, sorry, we are 30 minutes beyond, but we're going to roll through this quickly. This is the Cohasset Preserve rental proposal. So let me cut to the chase on what is happening here. The select board, so Cohasset Preserve, i.e. Avalon. Every year, I'm learning this through Rep. Moschino, who has kindly educated me on the process. Every year, the town has the ability to object to a rental increase that the preserve does on the, based on the original permit, the agreement that flowed from the 40B permit. Let me just play language it. And this year, we did not object. And they, the new owners of the preserve are proposing to increase the And they, the new owners of the preserve are proposing to increase the rent pretty dramatically for a lot of residents in affordable housing units, including those on fixed income that are not accustomed to such large increases. And so that has been a pain point for many residents who have lived in the preserve for quite a long time and are not used to such a dramatic increase. For example, like $700 a month, that's a lot for someone on a fixed income. And so the town and Rep. Moschino have been talking about this, including with the state, who's also a party to the agreement, about what the state is doing to help control the increases to a manageable amount. In the background, what's going on here is that the AMIs have increased for the area that we're in, which means that if the long-term residents who are in the preserve get evicted, or somehow otherwise have to leave, they can be refilled with people at higher incomes who can be charged more for rent as well. And I would like to think that the Cohasset Preserve is not trying to force people out by rental increases. So anyway, we wanted to bring this up, including possibly asking the board to, perhaps direct Mr. Senior to come up with a letter that we want to send to the preserve with respect to rental increases and making this a little more palatable.
Would that, does the select board have any power to find the preserve? Or would this letter be?
Well, we have the ability to object into the future, and I think we can say, enjoy your tax, your rental increase now. This is going to be it for the next 10 years.
That's what I'm trying to get at. What's the select board's authority here?
We signed an MOU with the preserve and have the ability to object.
Would an objection prevent the preserve from subsequent rental increases?
I think it would slow down any rental increase and force a discussion among the entities.
I would make that motion right off the bat, that we direct the town manager to write a formal letter to the select board that objects to Avalon or the preserve, I'm sorry, arbitrarily raising the rents on those in need.
And I think it's fair to say that we expect and would appreciate an increase to measure it with past increases that are proportionate to past increases and in keeping with perhaps the condition of those apartments that have not been upgraded compared to other apartments.
So you can tack that on in my motion, too.
I have not read the memorandum of understanding, so I don't know where. I don't think that there's any legal standing that we have to institute Cohasset rent control.
It's, it's not rent control, but we're a party to an MOU.
Yeah.
When you, when Avalon came through, they did a friendly 40B with the town Cohasset.
Right.
And as part of that, they entered into a three-party agreement, which is with state, with town, and with the project proponent at the time.
Right.
It speaks to contact information, notices, what the rent should be. It references directly state, federal law, fair housing, things like that. It also has a provision for how you calculate who is affordable, what constitutes affordable housing. In this instance, it is 80% of the area median income, which is commonly referred to as AMI. And the area median income does fluctuate from time to time. And it proposes a calculation by which, so you go in at a certain rate and a certain rental calculation.
And these are essentially regulated under, under 40B or?
Under this contract, and under, under this contract in particular, and in general, calculations for affordability. Because there's different levels of affordability. This is 80%.
And these were required when it got its permit?
Right, so this was, this was all negotiated, the contract, I'm told, by the state is standard. And the, and I want to be clear, the calculation is fairly, is standard as well. And they have not done anything wrong. As the chair indicated, it's the AMI that is dramatically increased because we are part of the metro Boston area. And so we are part of that, it's not just about Cohasset, it's about the larger area. So they have calculated it correctly. That does, but you still have the opportunity to register an objection. And that was what we discussed, was to bring the new preserve to the table to discuss something more modest. Because the point is, is you are obligated to have affordable units. And there's a lot of things that flow through, from the threshold, through that threshold. These are all units that are on a subsidized housing index, and you must make a certain percentage to tend.
Yeah, I understand.
And you all are aware that, you have a housing production plan. So, but more to the point is that because the AMI is dramatically increasing out of whack, what it's doing is it's undermining the equitable issue here about preserving housing stability and having a range of socioeconomic, you know, people living in your community. And so what it served to do is destabilize all of the people in the Avalon right now who cannot bear that, that dramatic increase. What ended up happening was, people started coming to my office, because it is through, you know, it's part of, it's overseen by the state as well as the town. And we started to realize that there was a theme about who we were dealing with. Oh, I apologize, I wasn't planning on presenting. But, yeah, sorry. So, so I, we approached the town, the town manager and the board chair, and town manager encouraged me to research it, which I did, and to start to try to propose some strategies. And that's what the chair and I discussed. And so what we're asking is to try to bring Avalon, or excuse me, the preserve, excuse me, the preserve to the table to discuss a more reasonable, a more modest increase. Because the whole point, it's a beneficent statute. The whole point is to create affordable housing so that people can downsize or continue or something.
According to the rules that were laid out in the memorandum of understanding.
And it's all governed by them.
So the people who entered into it on the other side entered into the agreement to agree to build this under certain standards, correct?
Well, they have to comply with all of your building codes.
Right, and they don't.
What they did was, is they got, they got benefit as well, because 40B gives them certain, right? So they got good value.
They agreed to restrict it to a certain standard. So you're basically saying that.
I'm saying that they're trying to evict all of your residents, and I think you should stop it.
Thank you.
What I see is, you know, we have a fluctuation AMI, all right? And it's a freak one, because it's just junk. And so they're seeing a window, they're jumping through it and trying to get as much as they can out of it, so.
So Paul, I'm sorry, do you have a motion?
We had a motion, but no one's acting.
Yeah, but can we restate the motion? Because you added on to it about something else.
I know, I added that on.
No, but, let's, would you withdraw, and then we'll just start afresh?
I'll withdraw the motion.
If I may just add just a little more to this. I did speak with the head of the local ambition program at the state the other day about this. And it's not a problem that glass alone is facing. During the pandemic, rents were held down, both by law and by reality. And what's happening is a lot of complexes, and not just here, are leaping to catch up with past rental increases they didn't take during that period. Now, while they may legally be entitled to it, the issue is more, what is it doing to people who are finding themselves in a tough position? And so it's more of a approach than a legal, you know, it's not like we could be suing them necessarily. It's about the spirit of the law and the spirit of maintaining the, you know, the diversity of the 40B about. The state is working actively on this issue. And, and I, they promised to stay in touch with my office as they continue their conversations. That said, the town, we have not historically engaged them very much. I've never, until just a few months ago, I've never had anyone from the preserve come to my office. But again, what's happened is this, this catch-up. Again, which is, as the state explained to me, is it may be legal, but it is having a significant impact.
It's more of a quote, let me see.
Yes, and so, you know, the, the, the preserve is an important part of our, not only of our 40B component, but it was our housing stock. I mean, there's 200 and plus units up there. And, and people are in there for a variety of reasons, whether they're downsizing, or renovating, or going through whatever other, you know, trying to get into Cohasset, or whatever it may be. So it's a really important housing element. So having a conversation with them, I think, is really important and a good idea. And I think, I think, I mean, my only recommendation, before the board blasts them with both barrels, I would recommend we invite them to the table.
Right.
To have a conversation.
Yeah.
And say, hey, you know, it's really important for us to try to make sure that we're working cooperatively. And we understand you have to make a profit at the same time. We want to make sure we're protecting people from, who need the protection.
I would suggest that send a letter to their lawyer, because they've invited us to only contact them through their lawyer, at least you, Rep. Moschino. Maybe Mr. Grady, you might be interested in sitting down with them, perhaps?
I think that we should, I'm not adverse to discussing it with them.
I'd be happy.
But I don't know what this memorandum of understanding is. I haven't read it. I don't know the circumstances. I do know that if they came to us and they said they're facing now dramatically higher interest costs, and they had to do some work in there, if they came to us and asked for us to up these AMIs, I think there's a, you know, fairness in here. And I, and also, one of the things people, it's wonderful to say, oh, I don't want people's rents to go up. It's a very politically popular thing, and you can get some good headlines. However, these programs are the product of a lot of back and forth. And what people forget is, you put these from the, from the perspective of what's a benefit for a community, you put these in place to encourage the creation of more housing than you would have otherwise. So I'm very leery about, you know, coming back and grandstanding, because you want to look, look good, and undermining a very successful program. And I might add that these programs, the, most of the, or a large number of the developers who do these programs are really nonprofits.
So let me just be clear. What's going on here is 10% of that project is designated to be affordable units. And the rest of 90% is marketplace. So they're making their margin, that's built into what they're doing. And all I'm suggesting is that the Cohasset Board of Selectmen, oh, excuse me, the select board, invite them to the table to discuss what would be a more appropriate and reasonable approach towards the rental increases now and moving forward in time. And the state is facing all of these across the region. They support this effort completely. And I do just want to be clear, the preserve has done nothing wrong, technically. But I will just say that across the board, residents from the preserve have come to my office, they have come to Senator O'Connor's office, and they have been seeking our assistance. And it, doing the research, it turns out that it's really the town that can. And so that's why we brought it to the chair. And I think that it's, it would be interesting, I think, to, and I know I've, I've sent some of the residents that felt comfortable coming in and discussing such personal matters with town managers. So we started to get a feel for how many and who, who is impacted. And these are real-world impacts to people who, however they came to be here, need affordable units. And right now, as it exists, is something that they can all manage. They're in a place and paying at what they can manage. And to do otherwise would really be to create a lot of housing instability and potentially push people out of the community and into homelessness. So I, I do think it is a worthy topic for this select board to engage. What is one of their biggest housing, you know, opportunities?
Just simply sit down and talk to them.
Can someone else have a comment, please?
Yes, of course.
Thank you for alerting us to this. Is there someone in the audience?
I do have somebody who'd like to make a comment. Is that you, Red?
Is it from Greystone, the developer?
No, no, it's, it's a resident of Cohasset.
I'm going to hold for now, just because I do, we're way over agenda, and I want to make sure we get a clean motion out the door. Ellen, did you have, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, did you have something else you wanted to say?
I just wanted clarity on one point. Is the objection to rental increases on the 10% of the affordable housing stock or on 10% and the 90%?
On the 10%.
Only on the 10%?
Okay. Everything else would be market rate.
Okay.
Right, actually, but it's 25%.
Oh, is it 25%? Excuse me, 25%?
25%.
I'm sorry, I was listening to your other conversation earlier about.
That, that's okay, thank you. Okay. All right, Mr. Grady, you originally had done a motion, and then we sort of went in.
I'm giving it to Ellen to make.
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't remember what the motion was after all of the conversation. Well, I'm going to be the stenographer to read it back.
I withdrew it, I withdrew it, so you can make the motion.
All right, so why don't we just try to reset here? The motion was to send a letter to Greystone to indicate our concern and potential. I mean, do we want to do an objection or a potential objection?
Objection.
I would like to ask for a discussion, and if a discussion letter, I would be glad to support.
I'd object.
Okay. All right. Just straw poll, who wants to object on the board?
What do you mean, object? I'm sorry.
Object to the rental increase?
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, we've got three people willing to object to the rental increase. Paul, would you like to make a motion, sending Greystone a letter indicating our objection and asking them to come and sit down with the board to discuss their proposed rental increases and how that may impact Cohasset residents?
I would make that motion, that we invite, or we sit down with the representatives of the preserve. We don't have to formally object, but I agree with, is discuss where they're at and, you know, an objection may be forthcoming. So we'll try to work it out equitably. They may sit down, instead of firing both guns at them, it might work well, just firing an arrow or two.
All right, we've motioned, do we have a second? Second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
Abstain.
All right.
Abstain.
Okay. Mr. Creighton?
All right. We, um, thank you.
Absolutely.
You know, for bringing this to our attention. We will keep everyone posted.
Thanks so much, and thanks for all of your great work. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank you.
All right, we are at budget message discussion slash vote. Now, I realize it's pretty late, and this is an important, important message. We did get advisory's recommendation, which is in your packet. And they proposed a lot of interesting things in their proposal. If the board is so inclined, one thing I might suggest is, and, and Chris, you tell me if this jams you. I don't think it should, but I would suggest this is something we take up in the new year. Let's think about this a little more. And we're going to, the Long-Term Finance Committee is going to meet on Monday. And so maybe we can talk among the finance committee, including about capital stabilization versus advisory reserve, and how to sort of navigate those waters, and then come, come back to you with some input that we get.
So long as the next motion fits the agenda, then we're fine.
Okay, okay, I got you.
By the way, I, I just want to note briefly that I had a real problem downloading stuff.
Okay, I, I have that same problem right now, too. There's something up.
I was.
Yeah.
Finally, so I haven't had a history, so I'm glad to put it.
Everything's down right now.
Yeah, it was up all weekend. When we, when we got the packet on Friday.
Yeah.
Okay, so are people okay with tabling this? And I'll come back with feedback from Long-Term Finance? Okay. But that, to Chris's point, only works if we have a longer timeline for annual town meeting. So here, we're talking about setting the date for ATM and elections, June 3rd and June 8th. And you say, why so late in June? A part of this is to give us time to effectively grapple with the town hall situation, to give us some lead time. We think we probably need more rather than less time, including on the zoning housing choice issues. So yes, it is a little bit later than we're used to. But we also have some heavy lifts we're trying to push. And we know that when we have that, we could use every week that we can get, so.
Also confirm the moderator, and I confirm town council for those dates, or at least for the June 3rd dates.
Does anyone want to discuss or have any concerns about?
It is within the bylaw, by law, Elijah, go through the end.
I only had one comment.
I only had one comment, on Monday, May twenty-seventh, the last day to post the warrant for annual town meeting, annual town election, that's a holiday.
Is it Memorial Day?
Yeah.
Memorial Day.
We, we'd have to, we'd have to have it out by the Saturday before.
Okay.
Yeah, we realized that.
Okay.
I'll try to give you a more elaborate schedule with other deadlines in it, once you set the dates.
So would someone like to make a motion to set those respective dates, June third and June eighth, for ATM and the town election?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right, Chris, town manager update.
All right, I will just be quick. Uh, I, I want to thank everyone who participated in the tree lighting. I was unable to be here, I was back home for my dad's birthday, but I saw pictures. Thank you, Justin, for organizing according with the chamber. And I want to give a big thank you to the facilities team. They did a great job, it looks great, Berardi, Jake Ellis and their whole team, really did a great job. They had fun doing it. And again, I think everyone really enjoyed it, the tree looks great and the condo looks great. So thank you to all of them, and again, thank you, Justin, and everyone who took part in that event.
All right, now we are at, um, select board comments, Mr. Pluck.
Very briefly, I'd like to thank town staff for their continued hard work and patience as we work through this town hall issue and as your office crumbles around. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Grady?
I would second that.
Okay.
Instead of we, we're going to get it done.
You're a creep.
Everybody at Cohasset, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate the holiday. Let's just be very thankful for what a wonderful town that we live in. And thank all the people who, on the boards and committees and volunteers who worked very hard to keep Cohasset a wonderful place every day. Merry Christmas to all, and to all of you.
Ms. Mar?
No comments.
So I would say, happy holidays to everyone. And on a related note, this is the first year ever that the Boy Scouts will be doing a brand-new event. It is a tree collection, Christmas tree collection. You can hire the Boy Scouts, it's a fundraiser for them, they're trying to get the word up. So I want to get, help them. And full disclosure, I have a scout. But if you want to look for information on the Scouts website, this is Scouts Girls and Boys. And they're going to start posting on social media too. So if you're trying to safely get rid of your Christmas tree after the holidays, they will provide you with that opportunity. So that's all we have, and thank you again to our town staff for all your continued hard work.
I'm ready anytime.
All right, we are at approval of minutes. October second, October twenty-second, November seventh, November thirteenth, November twenty-eighth. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Nope, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right, there's no topics not reasonably anticipated, uh, motion to adjourn, anyone?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.